I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano is absent. Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich is absent. Bender is absent. Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson is absent. Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are nine members present.
We have a quorum present. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Any changes or additions to the agenda? Seeing none, a motion to accept the agenda is in order.
So move.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting and adjourn session of October 9th, 2015.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. The reports of the standing committees are next, and the first is the Claims Committee, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Claims Committee is bringing one item forward for approval this morning. This is rescinding the right of appeal by the City Council Claims Committee and moving the right of appeal to a Staff Claims Committee. We discussed this in Claims one cycle ago. This did go to Ways and Means, and I am supporting moving it forward today. So with that, I'll move item number one for approval.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Claims Committee report. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye. I'm sorry, here.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Committee of the Whole, and that committee is chaired by Council Vice President Glidden.
Thanks, Madam Chair. We have two items on the agenda. The first is approving the 2016 City Council and Committees' calendar. The second was staff direction regarding enterprise racial equity efforts relating to our enterprise racial equity update, and I will move both those items.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Committee of the Whole report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing 13 items forward for approval this morning. Items number one through eight are land sales to Wilson Molina. These are eight vacant and boarded houses on the north side in the 4th and 5th Ward that one gentleman and his small business are going to be rehabbing, and then marketing for sale for owner occupancy on the north side. Item number nine is a bond issuance for senior care providence. Item 10 are the Licensed Consumer Services Agenda. Item 11 is a project authorization analysis at the Wellington condominiums. Item 12 is probably the largest item on our agenda, the whole council agenda today. This is an allocation of our 2016 low-income housing tax credits. They total about $1.4 million, which when syndicated provides equity in the amount of about $14 million for three extremely affordable projects in the city. They include Youth Link Supportive Housing, Marshall Flats, Claire Housing, and PRG's Portfolio Number One. Item number 13 is a resolution authorizing applications to various federal and state agencies for environmental cleanup grants. With that, I'll move items 1 through 13 for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development Regulatory Services Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to make a comment with regards to items 1 through 8. I think this is substantial and amazing, and, you know, I wish Mr. Molina well in terms of rehabbing all eight homes there. I think that it's going to make a huge impact on the north side, especially if he's successful, and I wish him every good wish there is for him to be successful so that maybe he can continue on and do another eight more, another 80 more. We have plenty of houses on the north side to see folks rehab, and now maybe this is a good example for other folks to follow. But we'll cross our fingers and see when it's done.
Any further discussion on the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Council President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward eight items for approval. The first two had to do with appointments to our advisory committees. The first is confirming the mayoral appointment for two-year terms beginning January 1, 2015, and ending December 31st, 2016, of Marie Listopad, Corin Morton, Rosalyn Sampson, Mohamed Isa, Donna Hemp, and Joan Wilshire. The second is approving the appointment of Yolanda Adams Lee to fill an unexpired two-year term beginning January 1, 2015 and ending December 31st, 2016 for a member-at-large of the Public Health Advisory Committee. The third item is authorizing acceptance of a $10,000 grant from the Environmental Initiative to support the urban forestry project by planting trees on commercial properties. Fourth item is authorizing acceptance of $125,000 grant from the U.S. Department of Justice for our work with youth violence prevention. The third item is authorizing an amendment to a contract with Megan Ellison LCC, increasing the contract by $25,000 for a revised total of $75,000 and extending that for consultation services for the Healthy Living Program. The sixth item is authorizing an agreement with Faxis, Inc., for a group purchasing program that will help us get better prices on our pharmaceutical and medical products at our school-based clinics. The seventh item is authorizing the Ryan White HIV/AIDS Treatment Extension Act of 2009. This is an intergovernmental agreement in Minneapolis as a participant, and this will allow us to be included in the grant area. And the final item is perhaps the biggest item on the agenda, which is authorizing staff to negotiate and execute a solar electricity subscription agreement for up to 12 million kilowatt-hours of electricity through the Metropolitan Council's RFP process that they went through. We're also moving forward a staff direction, asking our staff to move forward developing an RFP for our own community solar garden service. I'll just note that while we're authorizing them to negotiate, to participate in the solar garden project, there are so many localities that are also participating, there'll be a lottery to even find out if we can participate. So we may not actually get the kilowatt-hours that we're hoping to through the solar garden. So with that, I'll move all eight items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved, excuse me, the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Intergovernmental Relations Report. That committee is chaired by the Council Vice President Elizabeth Glidden.
Thanks, Madam President. There's one item. It is regarding the Federal Clean Power Plan. This would be adopting support for this as part of our 2016 federal legislative agenda and directing the city attorney to participate in taking action as necessary to defend the legality of the rules proposed. I'll move that item.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Intergovernmental Relations Report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. We have three items today for approval. The first item is accepting and granting an amount of $600,000 from the Department of Justice for our police body-worn camera program and passage of a resolution approving appropriation. The second item is accepting a grant in the amount of $120,000 from the Department of Justice, Bureau of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, for the implementation of a new initiative, new national initiative, multi-strategy coordinator position and passage of resolution approving appropriation. And the third item is to accept the 2015 Urban Area Security Initiative grant in the amount of $990,000 from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety and passage of a resolution approving appropriation, and I will move all three items for approval.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee will be 41-11 items a day for council consideration. Item one was moved without recommendation. That's a passage of resolution approving special service districts for the listed districts. The issue in terms of some of the management of the snow storage has been resolved by staff identifying short-term and some long-term pathways to make that better, so we'll be recommending approval today. Item two is the Water and Sewer Service Line Repair Assessments, resolution adopting a plenty of those assessments, and make sure that the remaining unpaid adopting the rolls and direct and transmittal of the assessment rolls to the Hennepin County Auditor. That vote will require nine votes. Motion will be distributed on Friday, extend the repayment period of five to 10 years of the new sewer service repair assessment property located 4140 Chicago, and I believe someone will be speaking to that issue once I get through the agenda. Item three is the 6th Avenue North paving project variance request. Proceed with the variance request from Minnesota Department of Transportation rules for the vertical profile of 6th Avenue North from 5th Street North to Washington Avenue North. The following items refer to the Ways and Means Committee. Item four is the 9th Street, 11th Street, 12th Street, and 7th Avenue North street resurfacing projects, postponement and reduction of the assessments as listed. Item five is the St. Anthony Parkway Bridge Street Reconstruction Project postponement assessments due to delay in the project's schedule. Item six is the 24th Street, Sullyan Avenue Street Reconstruction Project postponement assessments, and that is due to collection times for that project. Item seven is the 34th Avenue South, 43rd Street East Resurfacing Project, cancellation, reduction of assessments, again adjustments per the project. Eight, Controller Conversion Intelligent Traffic Signal Enhancement Project Agreement, and that's an agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation, to use federal aid funds to pay for that project and authorize the execution of construction cooperative agreement with the Hennepin County for the execution of the project. Item nine is the Northeast Minneapolis Watershed Modeling Project, and that's a partnership with the Watershed District, Mississippi Watershed Management Organization, to model that area of the city. It's part of an ongoing modeling that will go citywide. Item 10 is accepting a single bid of RAM construction for an amount of $373,733.37 to deliver all materials for the ABC Parking Facility Repair Project and authorizing a contract for that project. And the final is a bid for snow removal, a little bid on custom products for a total estimated annual expenditure of $906,520 to furnish and deliver all labor materials. That was the item actually, in fact, which is related to item one, which was sent for recommendation, but we're recommending, as noted, approval. So with that, Madam Chair, I move all 11 items as stated, though I know there'll be something pulled by Councilmember Palmasano.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to just note that for number two, I'm not sure how I move this along with it, but if he will accept this as a friendly amendment, I'd like to move, as you see in front of you, that the repayment period for the sewer service repair assessment against the property at 4140 Chicago Avenue be extended from five to 10 years. That would help that resident to be able to make that in an appropriate time. And then the other property that we heard the appeal for, I'd like to actually pull that for one cycle as Public Works is trying to work with that particular property owner on that particularly large assessment.
Councilmember Palmasano has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report, motion in front of you, extending the repayment timeframe for 4140 Chicago, and then pulling the second item for one cycle. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. Just briefly, on item number three, 6th Avenue North paving project, this is a substantially difficult street to deal with, given the presence of both bricks as well as the asphalt, and I just want to thank staff for all of their good work on it.
Any further discussion on the Transportation and Public Works Report? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means has 19 items on our agenda this morning. The first seven are workers' compensation claim settlements. Item number seven, or I'm sorry, excuse me, eight is a property damage subrogation lawsuit. Nine and 10 are personal injury lawsuit settlements. Item number 11 is the donation of billboard display time from Clear Channel Outdoor. Item number 12 is the appointments to the Minneapolis Television Network Board. 13 is the bid for trench drain replacement project at the Convention Center. Items 14, 15, and 16 are related to, let's see, the first is the 2015 Property Tax Special Assessment of Delinquent Utility Charges, the temporary financing for Nicollet Mall project with U.S. Bank, and then the statewide interoperable radio system upgrade. Excuse me. There are three IT-related items. The 17 is a contract with Equifax Workforce Solutions for claims processing. 18 is a contract amendment with Microsoft for Premier Corp. Support Services, and number 19 is the IT contract with Hennepin County for the Pictometry Aerial Imaging Software License. I'd like to move all 19 items for approval.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report. Anyone want to pull off any of those items or discuss any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Reports of Special Committees, and the first special committee is the Audit Committee, and that is chaired by Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are three reports accepted and published during this week's Audit Committee meeting. The first is the Complaint Protocol Consult Memorandum, referring that document to the internal auditor, which the Audit Committee did. The second report is the Internal Controls Program Consult, referring this with recommendation to Committee of the Whole, so I will move that. And the third is the Records Management Audit, also referring that to Committee of the Whole, as both of these items have enterprise-wide impacts.
Councilmember Palmasano has moved the Audit Committee Report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Intergovernmental Relations Report. That committee is chaired by the Council Vice President Elizabeth Glidden.
Thanks, Madam President. There's one item. It is regarding the Federal Clean Power Plan. This would be adopting support for this as part of our 2016 federal legislative agenda and directing the city attorney to participate in taking action as necessary to defend the legality of the rules proposed. I'll move that item.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Intergovernmental Relations Report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. We have three items today for approval. The first item is accepting and granting an amount of $600,000 from the Department of Justice for our police body-worn camera program and passage of a resolution approving appropriation. The second item is accepting a grant in the amount of $120,000 from the Department of Justice, Bureau of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, for the implementation of a new initiative, new national initiative, multi-strategy coordinator position and passage of resolution approving appropriation. And the third item is to accept the 2015 Urban Area Security Initiative grant in the amount of $990,000 from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety and passage of a resolution approving appropriation, and I will move all three items for approval.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Intergovernmental Relations Report. That committee is chaired by the Council Vice President Elizabeth Glidden.
Thanks, Madam President. There's one item. It is regarding the Federal Clean Power Plan. This would be adopting support for this as part of our 2016 federal legislative agenda and directing the city attorney to participate in taking action as necessary to defend the legality of the rules proposed. I'll move that item.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Intergovernmental Relations Report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Introduction and Referral Calendar, and the first introduction is an introduction by Councilmember Gordon pursuant to notice to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to housing for first reading and referral to Community Development and Regulatory Services, adding provisions providing for the licensure and regulation of emergency shelters. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Under New Business, we have a notice by Councilmember Palmasano.
She gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter of ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code, revising the Linden Hills Overlay District and pedestrian-oriented overlay district, and amending the zoning map with the guidance of the Linden Hills Small Area Plan. That notice is given. The second one is Councilmember Goodman gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter and ordinance amending the code relating to amending regulations as part of the Business Meet Simple Initiative. That notice is given. Next, we have under composting regulations, Councilmember Reich gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to Housing Maintenance Code, amending provisions related to composting, add new definitions of acceptable and prohibited materials, and to clarify enforcement requirements. That notice is given. Councilmember Reich also gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to zoning, amending regulations related to snow storage. That notice is given. Councilmember Quincy and myself give notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to administration, ethics, and government, amending provisions relating to trust and accountability in the Ethics Code. That notice is given. Councilmember Palmasano and Councilmember Gordon give notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the food code, amending regulations for mobile food vehicle vendors.
To refer it to Committee of the Whole, so I will move that. And the third is the Records Management Audit, also referring that to Committee of the Whole, as both of these items have enterprise-wide impacts.
Councilmember Palmasano moved the Audit Committee report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the introduction and referral calendar. And the first introduction is an introduction by Councilmember Gordon pursuant to notice to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to housing for first reading and referral to community development and regulatory services, adding provisions providing for the licensure and regulation of emergency shelters. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval say aye. Aye opposed, that carries. Under New Business, we have a notice by Councilmember Palmasano. She gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter of ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code, revising the Linden Hills overlay district and pedestrian-oriented overlay district, and amending the zoning map with the guidance of the Linden Hills Small Area Plan. That notice is given. The second one is Councilmember Goodman gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter and ordinance amending the code relating to amending regulations as part of the business made simple initiative. That notice is given. Next, we have under composting regulations, Councilmember Reich gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to Housing Maintenance Code, amending provisions related to composting to add new definitions of acceptable and prohibited materials and to clarify enforcement requirements. That notice is given. Councilmember Reich also gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to zoning, amending regulations related to snow storage. That notice is given. Councilmember Quincy and myself give notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to administration, ethics and government, amending provisions relating to trust and accountability in the Ethics Code. That notice is given. Councilmember Palmasano and Councilmember Gordon give notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the Food Code, amending regulations for mobile food vehicle vendors. That notice is given. I give notice of intent to introduce at the next meeting of the City Council the subject matter of an ordinance to the zoning code regulations regarding fences. That notice is given. Then we have the item that I'm sure a number of people are here to discuss. The first is a motion to return to author the subject matter of an ordinance amending the Minneapolis Code of Ordinance entitled Working Families, which was introduced on September 25, 2015, and canceling the public hearing previously scheduled for November 4, 2015. This motion essentially takes us out of the part of the working families agenda that was regarding scheduling. That's my intent in this. And then there are two following motions to deal with the sick leave portion of the working families agenda. So on that motion, is there any discussion? Councilmember Glidden.
Thanks, Madam Chair, for the opportunity just to make a brief comment. And I appreciate, too, that you have laid these out here separately so we can each sort of voice our thoughts on them and vote on these items. You know, how it works around here is you either have majority support for something to move forward or you don't. And I think what's happening right here is there is not majority support for this item to continue to be on the agenda. I was one of the authors of this original item. And I just wanted to say a few words about why I felt it was important myself to bring it forward and why I still think it's a very important issue to continue to work on. And I'm not giving up. We've talked in generalities for a long time in this city, and we still do, about disparities, about the fact that we are close to the worst in the nation or the worst in the nation with inequality and disparities. We acknowledge the economy isn't working for everyone. We acknowledge that the economic recovery has not helped everyone. But this was a way to identify a more specific problem, an issue that we heard about from workers, an issue that we heard was being researched to kind of talk about what's the breadth and the depth of the problem. And the problem is about scheduling. Scheduling issues that primarily affect low-wage workers, people of color, women. That's the stories that we heard. That's the data that we saw. These are issues about unpredictable schedules, how more and more in our society we're seeing workplaces that schedule up to the last minute, change hours week to week so you can't depend on what's going to be your income for the week. It could be four hours one week, 40 hours another week. And also, we heard about how we really haven't been thinking properly about the costs of some of this unpredictability. So what's happening is the least able people to carry those costs, workers in low-wage jobs, are being asked to accommodate all the costs of changing their schedule at the very last minute, having to get new childcare arrangements, having to ask someone else to come home and help take care of grandpa, whatever the case may be. That's what happens. You know, and I can understand that not everybody can agree with the process of how the ordinance proposal rolled out or even particulars of the policy solution. But I think what has been lost in this conversation, because we've had a lot of conversation about challenges around the proposed policy solution, we've lost our way in thinking about this was actually in response to talking about a very specific problem, a problem that's happening around the country and in the city of Minneapolis. And this was our way to say, we need to take action on a problem. We can't wait to take action on a problem, and we need to move it forward. So I disagree with this action. I'm voting against it. I understand that my colleagues, the majority of them, don't feel this way, and I understand that, too. And I guess my message is I'm going to continue working on this problem. I'm going to continue to fight for solutions to this problem. And I think together, we need to work with the community on how we continue to bring back this issue, and that policy solutions are appropriate to dealing with the issues of fair scheduling.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. As another one of the council members that stepped up to author the work that we all agreed to unanimously begin in April, when we passed a resolution supporting a strong economy and working families, I share Councilmember Glidden's perspective that now is not the time to back away from what has become a very difficult conversation in our city. We started this conversation because we know that too many working people do not have simple protections in their workplaces. They do not know how many hours they're going to get at their jobs. They cannot plan for basic necessities like childcare, like food, like rent, because they don't even know if they'll be working four hours a week or 40. As our economy has changed so that more and more people are relying on low-wage, minimum-wage, part-time jobs, the workplace protections that people need have changed. You know, in the 1930s, we had a situation where our federal government stepped in and said, people are working too many hours. The Fair Labor Standards Act created some basic protections that hit at those root causes of exploitation in that time. But we are in a different time now. We're in a time where too many people cannot meet their basic needs because they do not have the basic protections that are the reality in today's economy. You know, we started a conversation that opened up some difficult divides. It has become clear to me in this discussion that poverty is invisible in our city to too many people. When I hear people say that scheduling policies are a solution in search of a problem, that tells me that they do not believe the people who are coming forward and sharing their painful personal stories. The woman who stood outside at City Hall and said, I lost my job because my sister had my kids, and she got called into her job at the last minute, and she had no choice. So she had to call me at my job, and I left because what am I supposed to do? What am I supposed to do with my children in this moment? As a mother, I don't know what she's supposed to do, so she left her job. She went home, and she took care of her children, and she got fired. How is she supposed to provide food for her family now? We have accepted as a reality in this city that our children are hungry and that we will feed them when they go to school in the morning. We have accepted that is a reality in this city. That's the right thing to do. We should step up, and we should provide kids with food at school. But what if we worked together to address these root causes of poverty together? And what if in a moment where it gets hard, where people are saying to us, you know, you're not listening to the businesses in the community, you're not bringing forward the right ideas? What if in this moment, instead of turning back, we stand together? And we say, there are people in our business community stepping up. I can't tell you how many people from our business community, large and small, have come to me and said, I understand what you're trying to do, and I respect it, and I'm so proud that you're doing this, you're standing up like this, and I want to help. Some of our wealthiest business owners have said that to me. Some of my most beloved small neighborhood businesses have said that to me, and I will take them up on that offer, along with anyone else who is willing to continue this conversation to lead this fight that we need to take now in this moment. This is not the time to turn back. This is the time to stand together and to say, you know what, maybe we don't have the perfect solutions, but we all recognize together that there is a problem in our city. And this is not the time to turn back. This is the time to stand together with our business community, with our workers, together with each other, and move forward to find those solutions. I will not stop until we find those solutions. I thank everyone who has participated in this very long, very robust public discussion, from my smallest businesses to the largest employers and to all of the workers who have spent their time. Thank you.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I'm also not supporting this return to author, which it actually does two things, I think. And in and of itself, it actually, this is the way we most definitely kill things that we're working on here as a city, is we return them to author. I recognize there's future actions coming forward, but they're different, at least proposed, and we don't even know if they'll pass. So for the moment, we will be killing any discussions on Earn Sick and Safe, as well as on fair scheduling. And I'm not comfortable doing that, and I also think it's unnecessary. We're also canceling the public hearing that we unanimously supported just a little while ago, that we pretty much made a commitment to the city that we would have, we would take more input. And I think we need to do that, and we need to talk together, and the public hearing is exactly what should be happening. I also think it's unnecessary. We could take fair scheduling off after the public hearing. We could do it later. We don't have to take anything out right now. We don't have to return anything to author. We could create a work group to work on these things and still have these ordinances out there introduced by the original authors and working on them. But mostly, I just think that it's unwise. It's been quite an experience for a lot of us, I think, the last few weeks. And it might have seemed like a long discussion we've had this, but really, we're barely beginning the discussion. And it's certainly been intense for me. And I'm not even one of the authors of these ordinances. And there were a couple moments where I thought, why the heck did you guys get me into this? As I was standing in front of a bunch of businesses and having them all upset about it, or listening to people so anxious and upset about their working conditions out there. But really, I want to say thank you. Thank you for getting me into this. Last Friday, I opened my mail, and there was a letter with 16 pages of signatures in it. And it was asking me, and maybe you all got this, I don't know, but it was asking me to help improve working conditions for people in Minneapolis. It was from three large industrial laundries located in Minneapolis. I decided, I had a few moments, and I thought, well, I'm just going to read through some of the names and think about it, and imagine what it's like to work in a laundry. It was from Andre, Nahimi, Wanda, Jose, Univa, Kang, Khan, Bon, Maria, Carrie, Olga, Lux, Carlos, Kathleen, Hugo, and many others. They wanted us to work on fair wages. And it dawned on me that these are real people. And that's the part that I just want us to remember. We're talking about people's lives. And these people happen to probably be the same people who cleaned the sheets for me when I had to go in for my emergency surgery and have my gallbladder removed. These are the people that do the linens when we go to the restaurants, or the towels at the hotels. They make sure that the city works, and they serve all those other industries and businesses. And they're just saying, please do something to help make it a better city for them and for other workers. And then, of course, there was the meeting Friday morning downstairs in Room 132, where I sat on the floor next to Jim, my hardware store guy. The hardware store guy that, when I was on my neighborhood group board, we were doing market studies, and we were appealing to, please open on Franklin Avenue, please come to our business. And now he sees me a few times a month when I go in there. He is so loved and so beloved. And he was there, and he was there freaking out and complaining about what's going to happen if he has to do some of these things. And he's a friend of mine. And then there was, the day before, 350 people must have showed up at City Hall, and they wanted to talk. They wanted to tell, share some stories with me. And I heard some. There was, the first one probably stood out the most. There was Larissa, and she talked about how she works at Target Field, and she doesn't know when she's going to get called in. And sometimes she's asked to come in. They call her at 2:30, and so you have to come in at 4:30 to work. And she shows up at 4:30, and then she has to wait to actually find out if she does get a job or she doesn't get a job. And sometimes she gets canceled. And the thing about her was she was so incredibly nervous to speak in that room. She was trembling. And when she was done speaking, she was actually in tears. But it was so important for her to come in and express that. And the story that's happened to her, where then when she gets her shift canceled, she doesn't have the money to come in to pay for her bills, and she ends up having to burden her daughter to pay for that. She's afraid of losing your housing. She's afraid she can't do her fair share to support her grandkids. There was Michael, who works at Target Field, and I have to rely on some notes here. He had to sit outside Target Field unpaid for an hour before he was allowed to come in between shifts. So they make sure that if it's a doubleheader, you can't get paid in the middle of it. He gets paid $9.50 an hour, which he can't live off. And they add insult to injury when they had an employee appreciation party over there at Target Field, that he wasn't invited and he couldn't participate. And this is Target Field. This isn't a private corporation. This is Target Field. This is something that we are paying with, with our tax dollars to have built. This is presumably owned by the public. And yet, they don't have any fair shake in terms of scheduling. They can get cut at any time, and they get called to show up, and they don't even know that they're going to work. There was more. Rod, who kind of struck me with his story, works at Chipotle. He's scheduled to work at 2:00 AM, and then he has to go back to work at 6:45 AM in the morning. And he lives 30 minutes away, so some days, he just decides to sleep in his car. And he did go back in, and he said he's asked, and he pleaded with his supervisor to change the shift. And the supervisor said, they try, but they can't because they can't find anybody else to close and open. So he ended up quitting that job because he just couldn't handle it. And I know my time's about up here, but the thing that struck me was, why can't we get the business owners that were there on Friday morning, or at the Lake Street Council meeting, where I was standing in the corner and people were upset, or the Latino business group that I went to? And some of those people only have 10 employees. And a lot of them are struggling in the same unfair economic system that isn't quite working for them. But they need to hear and talk to the low-wage workers that were talking to us outside in the hall about their situation, too. We need to keep the conversation going. We have a community conversation going that I think we need to have. I think it's painful to have. It's difficult to have. But the way we're going to find our way through is by listening to one another, and not just by having the council member listen to each of you separately and your own stories, and then trying to mirror that back to you in some chambers on some Friday morning here at the council.
Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to bring a little bit of perspective to this work and to encourage folks to keep digging deeper. That goes to all of our colleagues, and to our mayor, and to the community as well. I think we've had a good prologue here. We've had a good beginning. We've had a good start. I come from a social movement world, an immigrant rights organizing world, where we've had to advocate for families who have been separated brutally by deportations and raids, where three-year-old children are visiting their parents at jails. So let me tell you this. What we're experiencing right now is just the hard work of public policy that really matters to the people of Minneapolis. So I think we've had a good start. I want to thank Councilmember Glidden and Councilmember Bender for the hard work that they've put into this work, to the community members, the organizations, the groups that are here today that will continue to elevate this issue and move it forward. I think this is a good reminder for me to realize how much harder I have to work to support these issues, to engage my small business owners, my immigrant business owners, and help them come up with solutions that will help ensure that these policies move forward in a way that will uplift all of the working families, including the working families that have helped to turn Lake Street around when no other business wanted to invest in Lake Street. I heard resounding support from small businesses, immigrant businesses on closings, an anti-closing ordinance on two-week schedules. So I think that there is common ground that's fertile for us to continue to drive solutions on. I do think that a lot of the internal conversations that we've had around this have to get better, have to get stronger. We have to start paying more attention. We have to start engaging more. And so for me, this isn't necessarily a move back. This isn't, you know, a negative move on this. For me, this is actually an evolution of the process, and it's an invitation for all of us to continue to engage the people who are involved in these discussions, to build the leadership of the base, and to look at 2017 so that when we come back as a council in those years, the people sitting at these seats are reflecting the values and the needs of your community, of your residents. So adelante. Seguimos.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to just express a few words. I agree with everything the Council Vice President and Councilmember Bender said. And I was particularly wanting to jump forward when Councilmember Kano gave us all the charge to keep digging deeper. We all care deeply about this topic, and it does show how difficult policy is to make around this topic. I've had the opportunity over the last several weeks to speak with so many of the small business owners in my ward and the undocumented families that I consider part of my family that are some of the lowest-paid workers in our businesses in Minneapolis. I've learned so much about the struggles of operating these unique establishments, and I've heard incredible personal stories about things like wage theft. The reality is our small business owners are terrified by these original proposals. Despite removal of fair scheduling, they're still very confused and concerned about what those existing proposals mean. We need to tailor these so that they impact the bad actors and that they don't ruin or negatively impact the other employer-employee kinds of relationships that are working. And to be honest, I share many of these concerns. The city can't jump into new regulations. A type of workplace regulation in the city has not been ventured into before. And without real understanding and data about how we will regulate this effectively, an arbitrary deadline won't get us there, particularly when we don't have existing staff with expertise in this area or the many staff hours that would be necessary to devote to this effort. We have to be really careful about what we're actually able to deliver and promise. So I agree that it's not a time to fight. It's a time to build consensus, and I'm very eager to work with you on that consensus. But I will be voting to return this to author. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. And I ran out of time on my last speech, so I'm back. I hope that's all right.
Yeah. You get to.
Yeah. Right. Take full advantage if I can sometimes. And I think this is such an important issue that it's worth more conversation, and it's worth more discussion. And I also think that we might think we know how we're going to vote up here, but we're up here. We haven't taken any votes yet, and we still have an opportunity to change our minds, and we can. And that's partly why we also talk to one another. One of the points that I just wanted to make is, in all those conversations and all those discussions that I was seeing happen with people, it just became clearer and clearer to me, especially when you juxtapose one scene with the next scene, that we have a real different economy for different people in Minneapolis. And I know that I've talked a lot about equity, racial disparities. We've seen a lot of the reports where Minneapolis is worst, worst in the nation on these. We've looked at how Minnesota and the racial income disparity has even grown larger. I think what we see happening now is what we saw happening 10 years ago, where it's working for a lot of people. So generally, unemployment is low. Generally, income is high. Generally, lots of people are doing really well. And in fact, generally, lots of us have paid sick time. Lots of us have scheduling well in advance, and we have lots of job benefits. But not all of us do. And actually, it seems to be getting worse. So for me, that's terrible. I've been here 10 years, and one of the things I'd want to do is make it get better. And so I feel embarrassed. I feel ashamed. And I feel like we are reaching out and trying to find ways we can actually make a difference. And when we looked at the fair scheduling, and when we looked at Earn Sick Time, we had an opportunity, and we have an opportunity to make a difference with minimum wages, where we can actually zero right in on what the problems are. The fact of the matter is, for people who are working at the lower end, they're not making it. And for those businesses at the lower end, in order for them to make it, it takes the public to come in and subsidize their efforts so that those people can keep surviving. So we end up having to pay one way or the other. And what we need to do is have that discussion where we can make it work for everybody so the economy works for everybody in a fair way. We talk about one Minneapolis, and oftentimes, what I think that meant is, oh, there's actually two Minneaplices. But after this discussion, I think there might even be three or four. And I think that when people actually understand that, when they have a chance to actually see that, people like me, people who live in Ward, too, people who have good jobs, people who are doing just fine, people whose lives are going well, and they have a lot to struggle and worry about, but when they suddenly see, oh, my God, this city isn't working for them. And this happened, this was crystal clear when we were talking about low-level offenses, mass incarceration, and the institutional racism that's there. It became crystal clear, and people said, absolutely, we have to change this. We can't continue down this path. What can we do? Please change the ordinances and make it work better. Find out a way to make it better. Well, guess what? We have institutional racism and structural racism in our economic system, too. And the people of Minneapolis, I think all the people of Minneapolis are sick of it, and they want us to fix it. And it's our job to help them do that. And to do that, we need to keep the conversation going. We can create our commission. We can create our work group. We can create our partnership, whatever we want to call it, and go ahead and have the public hearing, and go ahead and keep the discussion going without having this smackdown and having this say, ooh, sorry, we don't want to, you know, threaten people that much, so we'll scale it back. We can keep the discussion going, and then we can come up with a good resolution without having to return something to author and strip something off the schedule before we actually even had a real proposal in front of us.
Councilmember Kano, excuse me, Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to be very clear that the vote today isn't on any specific policy proposal. This vote today is to say that the City Council is no longer working on scheduling. We could have created a new process together to work on scheduling. We could have allowed the authors of the ordinance to incorporate the literally over 1,000 comments that we have gotten. All of the time that we have spent with our small businesses, I have spent hours meeting one-on-one with my small businesses. I have spent hours meeting with folks across the city in rooms that are got very heated. And any assertion, whether it was meant or not, that we were not going to incorporate the feedback of those small business owners, our large business owners, the community of Minneapolis that came forward to participate in this discussion, I don't appreciate that assertion. We are not voting on an ordinance today. We are saying that we do not even want to give an ordinance a chance today. We are saying that this is ending the work. And again, that means something, but it doesn't mean that we're going to stop working on scheduling. But just to be clear, there was never any intention to ignore the thousands of pieces of feedback that we got or to, you know, bring forward an ordinance that didn't reflect that. And particularly, I think of all of us here, the small businesses in the city of Minneapolis are dear to all of our hearts. And there was never a scenario where we were not going to address the concerns of our small businesses as we work through the details of any ordinance.
Any further discussion on Item 8 under New Business? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
No.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Who?
Glidden.
No.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsani.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes and 3 nays.
That item is adopted. Next, we have the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code proposed by myself and Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Bender. And anyone else who would like to support this is welcome to jump on as an author. It's a subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to administration, and basically what this is doing is putting this proposed changes in paid time off, earned sick time, in our code, in a place to, in a place next to our living wage ordinance, which is an ordinance that was passed a number of years ago that dealt with people that have contracts with the city, people who ask for city support in projects are required to pay a living wage. So this proposed ordinance will be next to that in our code. And so I'm introducing the subject matter, and it is going to take unanimous consent if we can move forward today on this. And my intention is if we don't get unanimous consent, I'll give a notice of intent, but I would appreciate if we could get unanimous consent because it will facilitate us moving forward with the next item, which is establishing a partnership group to study the proposals regarding sick time and paid time off. Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to say I appreciate you meeting with me on Wednesday and talking about this, and I will just say what I said to you on Wednesday, which was that I was happy to be an author, we did talk about that, and so thank you very much. I certainly remain very committed to this and want to make sure that my public support is part of this.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion then on the introduction of the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code to relating to paid time off and earned sick time? I'll ask for unanimous consent. Is, on approval, say aye. Aye opposed? That carries, thank you. Next item on our agenda is New Business Number 10 and its Workplace Regulations, and I'm just, I'm going to read this, please bear with me. "Establishing a partnership group to study the impact of policy proposals related to workplace regulations on earned sick time and paid time off, including consideration of regional and cross-jurisdictional implications of such policy proposals. The partnership group shall consist of the following stakeholders: representatives of employees, including specifically low-wage employees, representatives of organized labor, representatives of employers, including large and small employers, and immigrant-owned businesses, and representatives of business groups and associations. The partnership group shall consist of 15 individuals to be appointed in the following manner: three representatives appointed by the mayor, two representatives appointed by the council president, and 10 representatives appointed by the city council. The proposed appointments to the partnership shall be presented to Committee of the Whole at its next regular meeting, or, excuse me, at its meeting of November 18, 2015. Support and technical assistance for this partnership group will be provided by appropriate city departments. Staff will establish a framework for the group's meetings, and such meetings of the partnership group shall be open to the public. The partnership group shall select its own chair from its members. The partnership group is directed to engage the community in the development of recommended policy proposals through focus groups, listening sessions, and similar practices, and may consult subject matter experts in the course of its study. The partnership group is to report its final policy proposals on earned sick time and paid time off to the Committee of the Whole by no later than February 24, 2016." So I will move that, and then I'll speak to it. I have obviously been listening to the same conversations that my colleagues have along this discussion about workplace challenges that we have in Minneapolis. I think it's important to recognize that we had a great deal of pushback on the proposals for scheduling, and so I appreciate that that is off our plate. But I do want to say that sick time is important for me, that it's important for me to support people who need to have flexibility to take time off in their job, to be able to take care of themselves, take care of their family, take care of extended family. And I, it is my intention that we end up with a product that helps us do this across our city. I think it has been a real learning experience for me, that's one thing I'll say about this process, it's been a very much a learning experience for me about exactly the challenges that people have in this economy, but also how people live in today's economy. We have people all across the board with either support, like their scheduling, or dislike their scheduling. We have employers, large and small. I received a letter from one of my employers, I had no idea they had 400 employees in a factory inside my ward. But I think it's important that we listen to different parts of the workforce in this city more clearly to understand what people's concerns are. I come from the healthcare background, and so I'm familiar with some of the challenges and some of the opportunities, and the great opportunities actually that come with working in that system. But I'm not as familiar with industrial production in this city, I'm not as familiar with retail in the city. And I think we need to listen to people in those industries as well as the people that work in those industries and understand how changes can affect them. And that is my hope, that with focus groups and more outreach with more specific proposals will allow us to have a discussion that comes forward with recommendations for the City Council to act on. But ask for your support on this today. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to say thank you to Council President and the other authors of this, Councilmember Johnson, Council Vice President, for making this step. I'm very supportive, and, I'm sorry, also Councilmember Bender. I think we have the opportunity to do something really great here for the workers of Minneapolis, and to do something soon. We can't do this well without the buy-in of our city's thriving small business community, and you've addressed that in this partnership. I support this motion because it gives us a fresh start in dealing with some real issues about employees making decisions between getting paid or taking care of a sick child, a foodborne illness from employees that shouldn't be at work. We must deal with these issues, and we need employees and employers at the table. So I'm looking forward to the next step of this conversation.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. Sorry, I was a little confused by the, what's going on here. Thank you for the opportunity here. I would like to bring an amendment to the motion. First, I would like to say that, you know, partnership, who can be against a partnership? It's, you know, I think it's a reasonable way forward, I think the details of how this will operate will really matter in terms of what we see coming out of this group of people who will step up and volunteer their time to help us craft our sick leave ordinance. Again, we have had significant discussion about this already, so I would like to move this amendment, which would add a balance that's explicit in the makeup of the group, that the original makeup has representatives from all different kinds of important stakeholders. This would be explicit in saying that seven of those representatives would be employees, including specifically low-wage employees and representatives of organized labor, that seven representatives would be of employers, including large and small employers, immigrant-owned businesses, and representatives of business groups and associations. And with one left, there would be a representative with expertise in public health, again, because that would help ground this work, this important work around paid sick time with that expertise. So I would move that.
Second. Councilmember Bender has moved under New Business, establishing a partnership group to change the, I'm sorry, is, am I missing something on my screen? Oh. Amendment, it's amendment, mhm. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion on Councilmember Bender's amendment? Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I'm confused by this. Is there some sort of, like, concern that people won't be from organized labor, big businesses, small businesses? What is the purpose of this? I mean, I thought that the Council President's original motion laid it out, employees, specifically low-wage employees, representatives of organized labor, representatives of businesses. Why are we needing to spell out the exact number of them? And it looks to me as though there's some sort of, like, tiebreaker, public health person put in here. I don't get this. I mean, if Councilmember Bender was an author on the original recommendation, why is there an amendment coming from Councilmember Bender specifying this? What's the reason?
Councilmember Bender, did you wish to respond?
Thank you, Madam President. I am not an author on the, on the motion, to answer that question. This amendment specifies a balance between those who represent employees and those who represent employers. That is not intended to suggest that it is an us-versus-them dynamic, but given the large number of stakeholders that were named in the original makeup of the commission that would be appointed by the mayor, the council president, and the council, I feel it's important to make sure that, again, since the purpose of this ordinance, the sick time ordinance will be to create new protections for workers in their workplaces that they have equal representation on the commission.
Any further discussion on the motion, on the amendment? Signan, I'm going to speak against the amendment, and why I would oppose this is I do think it sets up a dynamic that we have opposing interests here. I think one of the things that's been the most interesting about this discussion is that there is cross-concern, and I think setting up some sort of a, one side versus the other with a tiebreaker is, sets us up for some kind of a dynamic that is an unnecessary dynamic. So my suggestion is that in the staff group that we will have supporting this partnership, partnership shouldn't be seven people voting against seven people with a tiebreaker in the mix. So I hope in this partnership, we're proposing staff support, and I would imagine that we could agree that our Commissioner of Health could be supportive as a staff person in this effort, and would be actively engaged in working with the partnership. So I would urge my colleagues to vote against this. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are not just two different kinds of individuals that I would like to see on this group, but probably six or seven, and just even to say low-income workers or employees, I mean, there are about five different subgroups even with that, within that segment that I would like to see. And, yeah, a big concern of mine is setting this as seven versus seven with a tiebreaker, which assumedly would be somebody like Gretchen Musicant, followed by a whole bunch of us lobbying on almost a daily basis, that one individual, Gretchen Musicant, to ensure that the, every tiny iteration of the proposal is the way that each 13 of us want. So I would, and I entirely appreciate the sentiment of Councilmember Bender bringing this forward, and I do also like the idea of having the, a public health representative involved, because of course that's the reason for bringing this forward in the first place. So I do support that segment of it.
Councilmember Glidden.
Thanks, Madam President. You know, I think a little bit of the challenge here is just having enough time to see the motion and then kind of work with the authors on suggestions, and so then there's suggestions here on the floor. I only saw the motion myself kind of late in the afternoon yesterday, so. I think often when we do these kinds of groups in some way, shape, or form, and maybe 7-7-1 is not perfect or whatever, but I think it's an idea of how do we put the balance in there, and that's sort of the underlying issue, I guess I'm just a little concerned about. I'm not saying that my colleagues will try not, for there not to be balance, but often when we put these groups together some way, we kind of try to form it so that there's balance. Maybe it's with, you know, three, three sets of groups or whatever it is, and I, you know, good point about we don't want to have sort of an us/them dichotomy, I can appreciate that. But I think the underlying concern is how do we get a framework that encourages a balance? Maybe that is a direction to staff to create a little bit more refined proposal for how they're going to try to achieve balance, so that in the end, this is a productive group, and not one where we have, after the fact, accusations of it was, you know, set up one way or another. I mean, I think that's, that's, that's the intention here, and so I don't know even if Council President has any thoughts on that, but I think it's something we commonly do, is, is, is have some way that we try to create balance in a group, and right now we have the components that we're going to try to add to the group, but without a direction on how to achieve a balance.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. It strikes me that this would have been a great thing for the Committee of the Whole to be working on after the public hearing on November 4th, not to be a sore loser, but it's definitely committee work. I can totally appreciate that we should have a balanced group on this, and I think this is one way to do that, it's just saying seven representatives, seven representatives. And I think it's actually more of a concern because of what just happened, because it looked like the business interests, you know, outweighed significantly the other interests, and so we just want some guarantee and some reassurances that this is going to be balanced. And I think that's what Councilmember Bender is looking to see, is when we start the new work group, let's at least make sure that we start with some kind of a conscious effort that we want to be fair, spelled out in a clear way. And this would do that. I'll support this, and if there's other future second tries, if this doesn't succeed, but it seems like it's a reasonable way to do that, also a good way to maybe bring more of us together around an idea.
Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President. I will be supporting this amendment today, and I think that this is a clear and transparent way for us to move forward and have this discussion in the public sphere. Again, I don't want to have these discussions behind closed doors in the coming weeks or days, and then come out with a proposal that our community doesn't feel like they can support or get behind on. I know that there's been extensive discussions about this particular language presented today, and I think this actually helps us to continue to move the ball forward in an effective and efficient manner, instead of pausing these conversations and then having another debate about who should be a part of this work group. I think that I've heard concerns from colleagues about, is, are we pitting one group against another? I don't believe so. I think it's pretty clear in the public realm that this is a conversation that needs to happen between policymakers, business owners, and employees, and I think that we should be clear and straightforward and not afraid of that discussion. And I think setting the table up in this way provides some strong guidance to allow this partnership conversation to take place and to really own up to the discussion that we're trying to have here. So I'm supporting this, and I would hope that everyone else can also consider supporting this.
Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam President. I think expatiating on the point that Councilmember Glidden made, we often have commissions where we seek balance for all kinds of purposes, be it our pedestrian advisory or disability advisory, and I would just recommend to Council President, in your motion, that you include a staff direction that says the staff will make a matrix to seek balance consistent with the objective of this commission.
Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess I just wanted to echo many of the comments that have been made. I think it's really important that we realize we want to do something on paid time off, earned sick time. And the purpose of this partnership group is really to study and make concrete recommendations to put something in action. That being said, I have an issue with the idea of making it too prescriptive and filling cells within a matrix of a specific number of group, because I think what happens in many a times is we try to achieve balance in our recommendations and our outside groups, we're looking for input from, that have, may fill several of those cells with overlap. And so by making it constrained with 7, 7, and 1, I think that defeats the overall purpose, but I think the intent is absolutely solid. I really appreciate it, especially the idea of having a representative with expertise in public health, because as Councilmember Frye said, and others have mentioned, this is what this particular ordinance is about. It's about public health, it's self-evident in its name. So I think we need to also avoid appointing people to a work group or a study group that is a staff member. So I would encourage us to look, as we're making our appointments, at the mayoral level, Council President or the town council, that we absolutely include somebody who has expertise in public health, and we absolutely have Gretchen Musicant as our commissioner, providing staff support, as it should be. But I think there's plenty of opportunities for that, those are people from the university, from the State Department of Health, there's a lot of opportunities, but we have to extend those invitations before we can actually prescribe that we're going to have one on it. But I think the spirit of what the amendment is being offered is correct, but I'm going to have to be voting no on this amendment, as I think that the overall spirit is captured in the initial Workplace Regulations Partnership Group as presented in the original motion.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I'll maintain that I think it's very reasonable to suggest that a committee focused on creating a new workplace protection for workers includes-
focused on creating a new workplace protection for workers includes half workers. I did not intend to suggest that one representative with an expertise in public health be a staff person at the city of Minneapolis. I think there's lots of folks in our community, from the university, from the hospitals, from the public sector and private sector, that would fill that role, and I hope we do include that perspective here. At the end of the day, this commission is only as strong as the commitment of this council to put in place folks who are willing to sit down together and have a constructive discussion about how to bring forward the best paid-sick policy that we can. And frankly, you know, there are a lot of jurisdictions in the country that have created paid-sick leave policies. We are not starting from scratch here. There's a lot of work to build on. We have spent months, actually, you know, creating, looking at some, these, a proposal to bring forward. There aren't that many big policy decisions to make about this. So, you know, in fact, I'm a little concerned about the delay here, because frankly, it is a pretty straightforward set of decisions that we have to make. So if we can engage this group of people that are coming together truly to bring forward a paid-sick leave policy that reflects what I hope is the unanimous support of this council for paid-sick leave protections for workers, then, you know, I don't see why we wouldn't want to have half of that group represent employees.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. I just thought of another type of individual that I would most certainly want on this committee, and that's employment lawyers. And perhaps, employment lawyers, probably both an employment lawyer on the plaintiff's side as well as on the defendant's side. And, you know, when we talk about implementing this, it's not just employers versus employees and workers. It's also how do we implement and enforce this at the end of the day? And the piece that I've been most heavily involved with thus far is implementation and enforcement. And, you know, if we're going to do this, we got to do it. And there are more than a few issues that we need to work out along the way. One of them, and I've expressed this to a few of my colleagues, is this concern regarding retaliation. I would say, you know, perhaps more than 50% of the time when an underlying complaint is submitted, there's retaliation by the employer against the employee. But adjudicating that kind of complaint is difficult. It's confusing, and it's subjective. You had to interview the employer, you got to interview the employees, perhaps even take a deposition. And at the end of the day, it's, it's quite complicated, and it can be expensive. Now, having the service of someone that understands the ramifications of, of policy, not talking about the overarching, you know, how does the policy impact people, but speaking specifically of how do you make sure that the policy works and is enforceable, is absolutely critical. So I don't know what side you would put, you would put an employment lawyer on, workers or employers, because they're neither, but I think they would be critical to this group.
Any further discussion on councilmember Bender's amendment? Seeing none, I'll call for a voice vote, or a recorded vote, excuse me, since we have some division. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
No.
Palmasano.
No.
Gordon.
Yep.
Conno.
Yes.
Reich.
No.
Bender.
Yes.
Glidden.
Yes.
Yang.
No.
Johnson.
Yes.
Quincy.
Nay.
Worsami.
No.
Goodman.
No.
President Johnson.
No.
There are five ayes and eight nays.
That amendment fails. We have the original, excuse me, motion in front of us, councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I didn't know if I should have spoken on, I don't know, number eight or item 10. I think a lot of this stuff is just all maybe a little bit interrelated, so I'm making my statement now. The Working Families Agenda brought substantial concerns from business owners and even workers in Ward Five. It wasn't about ED businesses and hordes of corporate lobbyists running the city council offices. It was about small ethnic grocery stores, daycare clinics, healthcare facilities, bars, and restaurants. Small businesses and some workers all saying it wouldn't work and providing detailed and deliberate reasons why. I want to thank council president Johnson and councilmember Andrew Johnson for their leadership in creating this partnership to bring workers and employers together to work on a sick leave and paid time off policy. Without this open and engaged process, I don't believe any of these proposals would pass. I represent people who are struggling to make ends meet. It is my responsibility to make that, make sure that in trying to make constituents' lives better, which is my one and only goal, that the city of Minneapolis does not create laws or a working environment which makes it harder for the people I represent to work, earn wealth, or live safely. And the unintended consequences of this policy could do just that. This policy needs the critical eyes of the people who run the balance sheets for our small businesses. It needs informed opinions of the minority and immigrant business owners who hire and employ many of the people this is supposed to help, and it needs the people most impacted, workers. If any business closed because of hardships imposed by this, if one business moved its operations out of the city of Minneapolis, or if we lose jobs because of this, we need to know whether it's worth it or not. This partnership will allow us to do the appropriate background and outreach to find out. It will bring together all of the parties involved, all impacted by these regulations, and it will result in better policy. And that's what we want. Thank you.
Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move an amendment on this issue. I will hand out a copy of what I have planned. So the change that I'm proposing here is the same language that you have in your original motion with the change on the partnership goal shall select two co-chairs instead of one from its members, with one co-chair representing employers and the other representing employees.
Second. On councilmember Conno's amendment, did you wish to speak to it?
Yes, please.
Okay, why don't you go ahead.
So in setting up the structure for this very significant work group, I think it's important to ensure that we have all hands on deck and that we have two people leading the way in addition to the partnership group. So I'm speaking from a lived experience here. I'm co-chair of the diversity committee on the Meet Minneapolis Board, and it has worked wonderfully. First and foremost, because we work as a team to set the agenda for the group, we help each other vet issues, and we actually work together a lot offline to make sure that all the concerns and ideas that we're bringing forward through the committee are building their way into the agendas and into the work plan of the committee. So I believe that a two-chair, a two, a co-chair structure will be a good way to ensure that we have equal representation on how the work of this partnership is moving forward. I think that it's important to support what you had proposed, which is having the group itself select these co-chairs. And I would hope that my colleagues can consider this change, the small tweak in the structure, to make sure that we're putting forward a strong foot and a balanced foot on how this future committee and future partnership will look at the work. Thank you.
On councilmember Conno's amendment, councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would urge the group to vote against this amendment. This is, again, an example of suggesting that people who are employers all monolithically think one way, and employees all monolithically think another way. I've had a lot of feedback from employers and employers on both sides of this issue. So I don't think we should be setting up a dynamic where people are at odds with each other. The whole point of a partnership is to bring people together. This group of individuals, however they're selected, will pick the one person that they feel most comfortable chairing the meetings. It doesn't mean that person, by the way, is more powerful or has more of a vote than anyone else. I guess most people will probably agree, council president Johnson only has one vote here, and her vote is not any more important than councilmember Conno's or mine. So I think this has been fairly carefully thought through. I don't like anything that sets up a dynamic of winners and losers, employees versus employers. And I think the fact that we're micromanaging the heck out of this thing says something about the incredible division amongst us.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate, I appreciate the sentiment of councilmember Conno's motion to have equal representation in the form of the chair. While I agree with councilmember Goodman on the fact that regardless of who chairs it or whether we have two chairs, they all have one vote, but once again, this brings up my previous point, which is, you know, there are not just two groups here. And if there are more than two groups, and if there's a third and a fourth and a fifth group, perhaps that could have an outside and even an unbiased persuasion to them, maybe that's the person that should ultimately chair.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to raise the point that I don't think the makeup of this group is going to set up the dynamic about the divide. I think that's just a dynamic that is there, and it might even be a dynamic that we helped set up by the way we've rolled this process out so far.
Councilmember Conno.
I just wanted to address some of the issues that have been brought up here, and this isn't about divides on the council. This is about participating in the policymaking that we're doing right now. I'm participating. This is an idea that I want to bring forward. This is an idea that other people feel is a good idea. This is a co-chairmanship structure that exists in other high-level organizations that are rolling out very significant and important work. I think a co-chairmanship structure makes sense because of the significance of the work that we're doing, and I think that it's important to let the group choose those co-chairs. I think it's a more democratic move, and I think that it's a move that I would hope would bring us into some strong solutions into the future.
Any further discussion on councilmember Conno's amendment? Seeing none, I would urge my colleagues to vote against this, because I do think, again, this, saying this for the third time, sets up a dynamic of one side against the other. And I refuse, that's why I called it a partnership. I want us to sit down as a community and discuss how we move forward on this in a way that doesn't impede people's employment, be they, be they an employee or an employer. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regardless of the outcome of this vote, I will be suggesting that a, that a third-party, non-biased, probably, in my view, employment lawyer should be chairing the thing.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing, seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
No.
Palmasano.
No.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
No.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
No.
Yang.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Nay.
Worsami.
No.
Goodman.
No.
President Johnson.
No.
There are five ayes and nine nays.
That amendment does not pass. I'm sorry.
The math was wrong.
The math was wrong?
Yeah.
Didn't, I'm, okay, that amendment fails. On the main motion, we still have two people in line to talk on the main motion. Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. So this is a language, a motion that you and I talked about around trying to reach that balance, a little softer language on the balance piece, that I think all of our colleagues had spoken in agreement that it's an issue that's worth picking up. So hopefully, this amendment is something that all folks can support.
Councilmember Johnson, Andrew Johnson, has passed out his amendment, which has the changes in red. Representation balanced, it lists the 15 individuals, and then in his suggestion, representation balanced between the above stakeholders. And then, under the paragraph about support and technical assistance, it says, "Support and technical assistance for this partnership group will be provided by appropriate city departments, including the city health commissioner designee with an expertise in public health." Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, I would encourage my colleagues to support this. It actually does what, what I think we all would have intended, which is to develop a group that represents a balance between the stakeholders that are identified as participants in the group, as well as being very clear that our health commissioner or a designee with experience in public health assists on the staff side. So I would encourage my colleagues to support this. Any discussion on councilmember Johnson's amendment? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye, opposed, that carries. We have then the motion as amended by councilmember Johnson in front of us. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President, and I was really appreciative of seeing this establishment of this partnership come forward when I read this late yesterday afternoon, and I actually thought to myself, this is probably something that we should have set back, set up back in April when we kind of established our own work groups. So I really appreciate this, I really appreciate the way that it's written, and enthusiastic that it might actually help us have some conversations and get to results. Then I had an opportunity to kind of think about it last night, and it occurred to me that there might be a way to make it a little bit more perfect and more aligned with what we unanimously supported in, on April 17th. And those of you might recall that on the 17th, that's when we voted, in fact, we all authored the resolution that established the Workplace Policies Work Group that was to look at state, regional, and city policy support for earned, sick, and safe, fair scheduling, preventing wage theft and living wages. And then we also resolved to develop policy proposals for council consideration, including subject matter and proposed ordinance language for earned, safe, and sick, fair scheduling, wage theft prevention in the city of Minneapolis. And so when I looked at the work group, I thought, well, it's, it's, it's in great shape, except it's leaving out two of the things that were most important to us in April, that I think also, things that I've heard from my small businesses and others that they absolutely want to get involved and work on. I mentioned Jim Wallner the other day, and this is one of the things that he was saying is, please, let me get involved in a group so that I can pilot some fair scheduling, so we can look at some best practices, and so we can figure out how we could have some templates, so all small businesses could prevent wage theft and those things. So I realize that I'm now amending a slightly amended ordinance with what's before you, but hopefully I have this in writing. So what I'm suggesting is that we allow this partnership, as they're doing their work, not to be limited, and so I'm adding the words "including," and then after working on earned, sick time, and paid time off, we can include city enforcement of state regulations including wage theft and fair scheduling requirements. And then later on, adding a line that says, "The partnership group is then to report its policy proposals for fair scheduling practice to the committee of hold no later than June 1, 2016, assuming," as the mayor and others have indicated, "that this is a complicated discussion, and it will probably take some more time than the earned-sick." So I will move that forward and see what happens.
Councilmember Gordon has moved his amendment. Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, I would encourage my colleagues to vote against this. I think we dealt with this in our action on item eight. It's redundant, so I would encourage my colleagues to speak, to vote against this. Councilmember Glidden.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I actually am going to agree with you, and we were on different sides of a vote just a couple, couple moments ago, and I think I expressed myself strongly there. But right now, we're talking about how to ensure that there's the confidence within this council for approving earned, safe, and sick. I want to support that process. I think we already frankly voted on this, and I think we need to look to another methodology for how we're going to bring back scheduling for those of us who agree this is an important area for policymaking. So for those reasons, I'm not going to support this.
Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam President. I think this is a really smart move. I think it makes sense to have this partnership, continue to look at the work that we already started and spent months and months of time on, including our city staff, researchers who were brought in, councilmember time. So I've heard from, from people say that there were strong champions on this council for wage theft, and that they were really looking forward to making something happen on that front. And I think that it would make sense for the partnership to examine that, as well as the scheduling conversations that we've so robustly started and should continue to look at. So I think this is, this is a very smart move. It makes sense from a holistic perspective, from an enterprise side perspective, and I hope that councilmembers can consider supporting this.
Any further discussion on councilmember Gordon's amendment? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye.
Uh, no.
Palmasano.
No.
Gordon.
Yes.
Conno.
Yes.
Reich.
No.
Bender.
No.
Glidden.
No.
Yang.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Quincy.
Nay.
Worsami.
No.
Goodman.
No.
President Johnson.
No.
There are two ayes and 11 nays. There are two ayes and 11 nays.
That amendment fails. Any further discussion then on item 10 on our agenda? Councilmember Andrew Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. I swear this is my last motion. This is on the date to report back to council. I would like to shorten that by one month, and just channeling Councilmember Goodman on why I enlisted as an author on the staff directive, and then would try to shorten this, is because when we talked yesterday, this was the date that I supported and that we originally talked about. You know, it's 90-plus days, and I understand there's holidays in there, but 90-plus days from now to get this done. And we've got 25 other governmental jurisdictions which have gone ahead with paid sick. They've already gone through a lot of these different issues that we're trying to work through the details. And I think if we get stakeholders together, sit them down in a room, and really address these concerns, look at what other cities done, I think it is certainly, certainly achievable in less than 90 days. And so I think we need to set a statement today on the importance of this, on the priority level of this, and say that, you know, there are consequences when we wait even a month on something like this. And so it's important that we do it as quickly, also thoroughly, as possible. And I believe that 90 days, more than 90 days, is enough to do that. So I'd urge my colleagues to support this.
Any discussion on Councilmember Johnson's amendment? Seeing none?
Madam President, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the motion has this coming back on January 29th, which is a Friday council meeting. If we're going to bring this back to committee of the whole, I just wanted to say the 27th to correct that motion, just since the calendar's in front of us.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So I'll just make a note of that, January 27th.
27, all right. Any discussion? Is there a second on that amendment? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, I'd encourage my colleagues to not support this, and I, for the reason we're talking about one month, and I will point out that we do have a holiday in that holidays in December, which always impacts people's schedules. The other thing that is important, I think, to realize, we're going to appoint this committee November 18th, I think. We have to appoint the committee. They will spend their first meeting just getting information and getting up to speed as to what other jurisdictions have done, as Councilmember Johnson said, but getting information and then understanding the charge that they have. And so realistically, I think if you look at one meeting in November, perhaps one in December, two in January, and then a report back in February, it makes more sense. Actually, when I met with staff, or yesterday, I guess it was, they suggested even going to March. So this is a compromise with regards to the staff capacity to monitor this partnership. So I would encourage my colleagues to vote against this. Any discussion, further discussion on Councilmember Johnson's amendment? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye?
No.
Palmasano?
No.
Gordon?
Aye.
Conno?
Aye.
Reich?
No.
Bender?
No.
Glidden?
No.
Yang?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Nay.
Worsami?
No.
Goodman?
No.
President Johnson?
No.
There are three ayes and 10 nays.
That item fails. We have now in front of us the item 10, Workplace Regulations Partnership. Any further discussion? Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much. I know I caused some ripples along the way, but I just wanted to land here saying I'm going to come on board to support this. I do think creating this commission is important, and I'm excited to see us actually successfully pass something that will address this issue of earned, paid, sick, and time off. So I'll support the creation of this work group, and wish it well, and I'll be engaging and keeping my eye on it. So let's get it right this time, team.
Any further discussion on item 9, excuse me, 10? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Frye?
It's the main motion.
Aye. Palmasano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Conno?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That item is adopted. Thank you all very much. Next item we have on our agenda is announcements. Does anyone have any announcements? Councilmember Quincy?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted, I have two quick announcements. One is the Business Opportunity Fair, aimed at helping minority and women-owned businesses sell to the city of Minneapolis. It's taking place on Thursday, October 29th. This is a output of the Business Technical Assistance Program within CPED, and it's really hoping to expand the number of small and mid-sized businesses wanting to sell their products to the city. So it's an important step forward, as many of the things we're talking about in increasing our supplier diversity at the committee of the whole the other day. So that's one announcement. And then the other announcement, I'm sure many of you know, our chief financial officer, Kevin Carpenter, is leaving the city at the end of this month. And although he isn't here today at today's council meeting, I wanted to take a moment and publicly thank him for his years of dedicated service to the city of Minneapolis. Kevin started back in the city in 2010 as the police department's director of financial operations, and was promoted to the city CFO position in 2011. In the five years he's been here, I'm sure everybody recognizes how he has ably led the Finance and Property Services Department during a time when the overall economic environment was becoming increasingly complex and challenging. And we as a city weathered the recession better than most, in no small part to Kevin's ability to help ensure that we were making smart, informed financial decisions. So on behalf of my colleagues and the mayor, I wanted to make sure we took a moment to thank Kevin for his service to the city, and wish him all the best in his new venture.
Any further announcements? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn is in order, and it's motion to adjourn to 3:15 for the purpose of discussing litigation.
Some?
Second.